All right, can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson?
Here.
Happler?
Here.
Cocharney?
Here.
Armspeed?
Here.
Satterfield?
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Here. All right, we had minutes from the meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the meeting, September eighteenth, two thousand, no, twenty twenty-four. You said it differently.
Yes.
A second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, the meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The minutes are approved. Well, I can go over the procedures tonight, but there's nobody here to listen to them. So that makes me think of the tree falling in the forest and nobody there to hear it, did it make a sound? So with that being said, we will move right on to case number twenty-four dash zero six nine.
Thank you, Chairman. One case on the agenda tonight, final plat, Roderick's first addition. The applicant is Todd Roderick, doing business as Alpac, Pleasant Valley Alpacas LLC. This is a three lot subdivision located just south of State Street, almost on our eastern border or eastern boundary city limits. The plat proposes separating three uses that exist, currently exist on site. So we have a single family home, a four unit multifamily structure, and then we kind of have a, it's currently agricultural, but it's going to be transitioning in the future to some type of industrial use. That's all on one lot, it's never been platted. So this plat is separating those uses out. This plat is not approving any development, that would become, be forthcoming at a future date with a site plan. I will note that most of this property is in the Pigeon Creek one hundred year floodplain. The structures are not, so any development will have to comply with any either filling or raising. So that's just an added note. Future land use map is as necessary as industrial, and the current zoning is I two general industrial. Though this plat proposes to keep the nonconforming residential uses on site, staff contends that by plating these separately, it's actually making it less nonconforming. We're taking a very nonconforming situation and making it less nonconforming. And staff is not, is recommending to not rezone this to residential. It wouldn't be consistent with our future land use map, and these are dated structures that probably will at some point be redeveloped, we think, at this time into an industrial use. Taking a look at the plat, one, this is accessed by one private drive via US sixty-seven. This provides access to these three lots and the storage, it's a storage business, which is the neighboring lot to the north. This drive does contain a at grade rail crossing. There's one access easement to fifteen foot that provides access to lot one, which is just agricultural now. All lots meet the minimum bulk standards for the I two district, so setbacks, lot sizes, et cetera. Well and septic are currently existing on site, and the lot sizes also meet the minimum standards, and this has been reviewed by the Scott County Health Department for their requirements. So septic has a minimum lot size. I will note there's, future septic will be needed if this is prolonged, the uses, so the residential uses, so they need new septic fields or they'll have to rip out the current ones. There's a number of different options. So that has been contemplated on this plat, and you can see there's a sewer easement that is dedicated for that area for septic. I will note then, the uses are nonconforming, so no expansion or intensification of the residential use is allowed under that legally nonconforming use status. So we're allowed to stay, remain same, but not expand it, intensify it. Given everything stated, staff is recommending approval of this final plat, and I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
No, there's nothing to add.
I would like you to add, I had called Mark and asked him just a little bit of this. You had a great line that you used about, not line, like a joke line, but a way to explain, my question was at the time, will the industrial development in the future in any way be restricted by the residential use, nonconforming residential use? And you had a great statement you made about that.
Yeah, we think the use by right should not be infringed upon by the nonconforming use. So we, you know, there, we have separate property boundaries, there'll be setbacks and things like that required. So if the industrial lot does develop, that use by right shouldn't be infringed upon, in my opinion, by the existing nonconforming use. They'll still have to meet their setbacks, they'll still have to provide whatever buffering may be required, but it wouldn't disallow a use by right.
We're not going to say, oh, you have to put in a thirty-five foot tall berm because there's residential adjacent to you, it'd be whatever any other industrial use, industrial use would be.
That could be true, right?
Okay.
So we wouldn't let the nonconforming use infringe upon the use by right.
Yep, well stated.
And we have case precedent for that. I think just recently, this commission reviewed a site plan on Valley Drive where there was, there are some existing residential homes in industrial zoned areas, and likewise, the future land use map kind of designates those as future industrial. Over time, one or two homes have been converted, so that's the trend of development we see going forward with these kind of outliers.
Yep, good, appreciate that. All right, questions or comments other than mine from the commission? No?
I already asked mine.
No?
No Alpacas.
No Alpacas.
I know. No Alpacas? Taylor?
Not for my knowledge, yeah.
All right, then I would, well, nobody in the audience, I want to recognize the audience, nobody in the audience. I would take a motion on case twenty-four dash zero six nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number two-four dash zero six nine, subject to staff recommendations.
No second to that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend for approval, case twenty-four dash zero six nine, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Twenty-four dash zero six nine is recommended for approval, which would then take us to the zoning discussion.
Taylor, let me just jump in real quick. Taylor's prepared a lot of information for you. This is just the beginning, so I want you to think about this as that first day in class when the instructor goes over the syllabus. This is what we're going to be working on for the next few months.
First they write their name on the board.
Yes, right.
Yeah, in big letters.
Hopefully you know our names.
Yes.
But this is the syllabus for the next few months.
Okay.
And it's really just looking at the zoning code and updating it based on the changes we made to the comp plan. So you thought you were done when the comp plan was done, but we tricked you, there's more. Taylor's going to take you through it. Again, think of this as the beginning, we're just trying to reinduce you to the code. You use the code all the time. You guys are familiar with the code. You don't sit down and read it, but you're using it in staff reports, you're using it in the questions that you ask all the time. We're going to talk about where the code is in that now and where we think it should go. So Taylor, the floor is yours, but that's kind of the idea right here.
Yep.
An introduction, if you will.
Thank you. And you warned us earlier that we were not done.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
There is no done.
Yes, no done. All right, Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is, we're calling this a project, a kickoff to the zoning ordinance update, but in fact, we've actually been working on it with RDG, the hired consultant who did our comprehensive plan update with us. We've been working on it all summer and even a little before then, while the comprehensive plan was being updated. So that's really when we started kicking it off behind the scenes. What RDG did along with us was identified sections to either reorganize or minor sections to update for simple things such as state code or redundancies, things that aren't very controversial per se or policy oriented, and update those things, and then to produce a clean code that we can then review as a whole body and public, et cetera, to actually get some input. So that was, that's going on, so we identified some best practice research, audited our code, made sure what, you know, what needs to be updated, either for state code or things that don't exist anymore, that we don't have, a lot of it's actually from state preemption code. Use definition updates, a lot of those were added, I don't think very many subtracted, because there are some uses that aren't really well identified. So staff is making determinations of like what a, what a coffee shop is, is it a restaurant, drive-through, fast food restaurant, drive-through by use, or, there's a lot of uses that just needed to be defined that were a little outdated. Reorganizing, reorganizing the chapters, mentioned that. And then we're doing this background overview with you, and we plan to do it with city council in some time in the future, just to kind of give a refresher and kickoff. So that moves us until the next, into the future, and what we plan to do is begin reviewing, gather input and comments, and kind of go chapter or maybe a collection of chapters by chapter. So we expect to probably have a standing item on our agenda this coming year. We'll have to play with timing, and we don't want to go into the five hour range again, but.
We appreciate that.
I don't want to do that. But kind of have a, get as much as we can done in that time period and then move on the next month, and then that's kind of how we propose going through these. Some of these chapters are going to be very hardly any comment, and then some will have a lot more. We also will be meeting, staff will be meeting with individual stakeholder groups, such as, we'll have, we won't do, we'll do one meeting with the Board of Adjustment, the Business Network, the Development Community, or Development Corporation, I should say, and then one-on-one meetings with individual developers, city council members if needed, architect firms, a lot of this is administration and the process, so they'll get good feedback on how they are implementing our code, or at least understanding it. And then also have a public facing website, which will contain these, you know, we'll update the draft so often when we get those chapters kind of in the rearview mirror and then move on to the next one. And then kind of have, maybe we, we proposed to actually do some policy proposal surveys, but that's still, we have to iron that out. And then we codify, which is taking all that information and creating a final draft, basically, like the legal review, et cetera, and then adoption. This is, this timeline goes through the summer, so that's kind of our, our goal. So we've set some goals. This is what our current ordinance is. We have sixteen chapters and an appendix, and we use, well, some of them are actually empty, some of them have the same titles and they differ a little bit, but everything is here, and I kind of provided a very basic, one-line summary of what that chapter does. So, and this is how most ordinances are comprised of, they have their definitions, you have your, how, what your districts are, and you have your site regulation standards, you know, shall there be a berm, shall there not, buffering, et cetera. Sign regulations are often in there, and administration, which is how we actually administer this code. So this is what we have currently. This is what RDG did to kind of simplify it. They took everything, and I tried to color code to communicate what they actually did, but they turned those sixteen chapters into ten, and they, by combining quite a bit, like all of our zoning districts into one chapter, not having DCAs in a separate chapter than Euclidean districts. Some of the, we just did the preamble as a update to the zoning code, combined that into chapter one, some simple things to make it a little user friendly, more user friendly. There was some redundancies in there. This is supposed to be easy, not just for staff to use, but for the public, for commissioners and council, and that's what we're aiming for. So that's, that's already been done. We're actually expecting a, the clean version, we'll call it, by sometime in December, but they've gotten, RDG's got all the input they need to reorganize, and that will be what we'll kind of work off of going, moving forward. These are some of the, and I kind of mentioned some of the things that we've already done with the plus signs and, and or minus signs, we've removed some requirements like for our paper zoning map, our zoning map lives online, we do have it, a physical copy of it, but it's digital. But there's, I want to point out some of these question marks, which are actually more policy proposals, which we will have to work through as far as recommendations through our board, through our commission and council, and they're kind of large changes, I would describe them as. So like in our zoning districts and permitted use table, not only we have to review what, what permitted uses are allowed in each district, there might be some conversation on some of these uses that we run into all the time on, maybe some certain zoning districts. There might be a way, a method to actually expand the number of zoning districts, maybe for commercial uses, so you could put some of those uses that come up that are really hard. I think C, we heard a lot about C two zoning just being in a kitchen sink for a lot of uses, for lack of a better term. Maybe putting some of those uses in a separate district and being more intentional about what's allowed and what's not allowed in some of these districts is an option. Also, we get a lot of, we just had a case come through, which really kind of tested the limits on what the slot size, minimum lot sizes on different zoning districts. We have very, our R one and our R two are nearly identical in lot size. Once you get into our R three, R four, R five, that's really designed for multifamily and not residential, single family residential or townhome. Maybe we tweak those to make them allowed, beneficial for somebody to develop a single family home there, but have much reduced lot sizes or setbacks. Right now, our standards are, just they stopped pretty much at R two, they don't go down, so it's kind of hard to work with developers that are trying some novel concepts of maybe small, single family homes, detached homes, like not tiny homes, but smaller. So tweaking those to actually have them represent the zoning district they're in. Site development regulations, one common theme we got through the comprehensive plan was, how do we regulate open space? How do we get more green, but also density, density in open space? So maybe there, right now, we have a number of regulations that require it, but it's hard to get there with all the different calculations to get there. Maybe it's something much more simple about just requiring a minimum number, a certain percentage, oftentimes is used in some other jurisdictions by different zoning districts, of course, and that open space could be your buffer, it could be your landscaping, of course, but having a minimum amount might be discussed. And please jump in if you have comments, or this is what, this is the whole idea. And chapter six are supplemental regulations, so you have our normal site development regulations, and supplemental are those added, unique uses that need a little extra regulations to make them compatible with other uses.
Taylor, that's, maybe that's a great example of one. So you've got ADUs, you're talking about.
Yep, that's what I was looking for.
Right, so.
Yeah, I'm real anxious to hear about this.
So that's.
That'd be a policy, yeah. Like I said, these are being proposed, or maybe we don't, and Mark could jump in, but these are policy proposals that we need feedback on. I mean, stat, staff brings up the ideas, we need to see how their, the input is on, by all parties.
So everything that has a question mark is, is a policy decision that we want guidance on. Now, we're going to tell you what we think, none of us get to vote. Luckily, you guys are voters. But we, we will tell you some things that we're seeing maybe in the field, in the industry that we work in, and share those ideas with you. And so all the little question marks are really those kind of policy ideas we're wanting to think about. I think, I don't want to interrupt your point, because I think you were trying to make a point, Mr. Chairman.
No, I just, really, that's something from my perspective, that's certainly, the train's on the tracks, it's coming, and it's already in a lot of places already, so, but we may not be ready to deal with it as fully as we should or could. So what do you do in a situation like that? Like, hey, ADUs are in our future, just like, you know, renewable energy and other things? So how are we going to deal with them? But we might not be ready to deal with them, so how are you guys looking at things we may not be ready to fully address or be able to fully address?
And, yeah, that's the research part, you know, RDG's expertise, because they do this all over the country, our, our, our knowledge of staff, and so we have some proposals for you, I don't think we're ready to go into them tonight, I don't want to.
No, 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 just conceptually, yeah.
And I would say, here's your homework. Think about cases that bothered you, where you were like, I, I know we have to do this because the rule says this is right. Think about cases that bothered you, and then ask the question, can the rule be improved? Or was it the right rule? And maybe do that to yourself, and I, we all have some, and I'll give you my example. We have the heck, a heck of a time when we get a, a business owner wants to come to our downtown, and they have these small little lots downtown, and they can't do nothing about them, they're, you know, sometimes wall to wall with other buildings, and they want to put a business in, and they're willing to risk capital and blood, sweat and tears to do it, and we run them through the gamut of parking, you know, like this gauntlet of parking that, that to me is nonsensical. We're almost disenfranchising them from being a business owner downtown, so I think we need to lighten up on our, and we already have a little bit, but I think we need to lighten up on our parking downtown. The poor guy that tried to put the little golf venue into the, kind of a one bay, one or two bay golf simulator in downtown, you know, had to come to this count, this board, city council and BOA, I don't know, three or four times, and all he was trying to do was improve a piece of property that desperately needed improvement. And so I have my list, I think you will have yours as well, and hopefully we hit upon those and we come up with some better, some better rules. Maybe not always, sometimes the rule's the rule, and we just got to follow it.
Yep, good, okay.
So yeah, ADUs are definitely a trend, they're occurring not only nationally, but locally as well.
Yeah, sister company.
Has Moline approved theirs?
They did approve them, yep. But like I said, they brought theirs forward as, in one format, and then they went back to the drawing board and it got approved as a different format. So there's definitely different, right now, we pretty much don't allow them. We have it noted in our code, but it's basically a live-in basement or attached, you would consider it just part of your house.
It's attached, it's not accessory. We have a attached dwelling unit, we don't have accessory structured dwelling.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we'll jump into that when we get to those sections, but these are good things to discuss, and maybe you do it at certain lot sizes or certain zoning districts, there's all different types of things you could do. Yeah, so I can, that's ADUs, for instance. One item we used to have a little better version of in our previous ordinances was some performance standards that related to environmental things such as lighting and sound, dust, et cetera. Those are the things I believe have been pushed to be reintroduced into the code. I think we're all aware of a couple projects that maybe we can, we have some, we do have some regulations, but they're not as exact, and things are, technology is changing, uses are changing with their externalities, so LED lights, for example, aren't dealt with with our code very well, they're based off of old standard incandescent lights. Sound, sound is really dealt with in a different part of our current city code, but these are still things that relate to zoning, and just other externalities, that's kind of what the environmental performance standards covers.
Well, I think about the time, there was a period of time when it seemed like every, every month, we had a car wash coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, it's like another car, Devil's Glen Road, another car wash, and then the big blowers where they dry them off, and.
And we don't really have a.
Right.
I guess we have, is it loud or not? It's a very subjective and.
Very.
And it'll probably meet our, our current sound ordinance. So there's a lot of different ways to deal with that exact case of, do we look at different, putting it in a different permitted use district, making a whole new district, or do we create performance standards that really drive where they can be based on the surrounding uses? I mean, there's, so there's different ways we could approach that. Moving on to our landscaping, we've already done some updates, we haven't adopted them, but we definitely have been suggesting them through our landscape plans about different tree species, not going all maple, but that's going to, we've incorporated a lot of the handbook, landscaping handbook into a draft for code. But another policy point would be allowing alternatives to current berm requirements. We are, when we get to berms, I think there's always a discussion around them. They are allowable buffer right now or screening device, but I think when we get past the development approval phase, when we get to the actual code enforcement, or once the development's up, we have a really tough time keeping those berms either mowed or in compliance with our current standards for not, not being a nuisance, basically. So is that what we really want? Do we want to see these overground berms, or is there, should we allow for different types of buffering standard or amounts or allowance? And Mark can kind of touch on that a little bit, but he's experienced a lot of it. Parking requirements, Mark also brought up downtown off-street parking requirements, that's his, but we did add, they already, or they, being RDG already added a shared parking matrix, which is what we use in our staff reports, but it's not in code, it's kind of us explaining how we came to our shared amount. This is a much simpler, has times, time of day and use types, and you can just look at the amount, and so if you have a coffee shop next door to a bar, it makes sense that they could share the spots because of different hours. So that's a big improvement. They also have drafted language, how to incentivize electric vehicle charging spaces, not requiring necessarily the actual chargers, but kind of having electric charging spaces ready for, in developments, which we've seen a lot of, even like some of the hotels, they might not have installed the chargers right away, but they've kind of thought out of boring either a pipe underneath the parking lot, so they can just put the electric, stuff like that, yeah. Just kind of having that talked about, because that's probably right around the corner from, we see it every year, being more adopted. And then lastly, I want to touch on the, on the site plan review, discussion about introducing, this is kind of a poor time to bring this up since we have two agenda items, but introducing an administrative review process of certain site plans or minor plats. So right now, our code is organized, any type of site plan, whether you're industrial, commercial, multifamily residential, if it meets the ten percent threshold, it has to go to P and Z, it has to go to council, and it has to go through that whole development process. Plats are actually the same way. So we just saw a plat that's fairly minor, and that might be on the edge of minor, but a lot split, those would technically would have to go through this body. So a lot of other communities, when we have a lot of items come to P and Z, and we've been here for, with, you know, fifteen items, and I don't know if that is helpful to have these minor items mixed in with some major items that are going to take a lot of attention and thought. So potentially looking at some type of administrative process for some of these minor amendments or site plans or minor plats.
That would be.
Just clarification, though, I think we'd have to do the plats, that would be.
Plats would, yeah.
Would be a change in the subdivision code, we couldn't do that in the zoning code.
So, yeah, it's more of a site plan, probably, yeah. But looking at our process, and our development process as a whole, it's, I think, did we just post the one online, Lisa? Yeah, we did, I can look at it. We, this is all draft, but.
Taylor, do you mean that something like we rubber stamp it when it comes? In other words, throwing this out, there's no neighbors that disagree with it at all. It's fairly mundane routine, checks all the boxes, it comes here and we're basically saying, nah, we don't need to talk about it.
I mean.
He's saying it doesn't even come here.
It wouldn't even come here.
It wouldn't even come here, and it wouldn't base, it wouldn't be based on the controversy, you know, well, it could be, I guess, we haven't formulated that out, but it'd probably be based on the amount it's changing or being proposed, really.
And we would probably handle, it wouldn't just be Taylor or just Mark.
No.
We would do a development review process, what do we do? Every, every case that comes to you guys has gone through staff, by staff, I mean, fire chief, police chief, city engineer, public works director, myself, Taylor, or Greg, whatever planner's doing it, we've all, we've all worked it over, and sometimes we're like, this is just a nothing burger, and, and we're.
Right.
Papering the file.
There's a lot of paperwork related to one case, I mean.
Taylor, it's pretty common in other cities around our area. Plats, for example, most cities have a major and a minor plat, usually it's three lots or less as a minor, gets done administratively, three or more, or four or more, becomes a major plat and goes through, so it's.
With no infrastructure, yeah.
You're going to decrease our pay.
They doubled mine last time, so.
This is our schedule for the coming year, our deadline schedule. Normally, we just have an application deadline, meeting dates, but this is actually what a typical case has to go through, and what, this is all the feedback going back and forth. So they're, if they're applying on, on Christmas Eve, for example, the twenty-fourth, we have a meeting internally, it's called development review, we issue comments, they have to respond to those comments before it gets to your packet. You have, they, sometimes there's a BOA meeting as well that they need, but P and Z meeting happens, then there's recommendations or comments from P and Z, and they have to address those, they might disagree with you, but they'll go to council with saying that they're disagreeing with you, and then we have to put that in another packet, and then goes to council, which could have a number of meetings. So these are all of those deadlines, and that's not to mention, we have, we encourage, we haven't required, now that, when I look at that in our future code, neighborhood meetings on certain projects, pre-application meetings, so we don't get, you know, the gigantic application just dropped on the doorstep the night, night four. All these different things, so this is, there's a lot to go, that goes into this process. And so having some of the simple proposals kind of off the table, so you can concentrate on some of the bigger projects might be of help, but.
This is on the website, isn't it?
Yep, but this is all, this is posted right here, since we're, we have one more application deadline for this year, and then we're into twenty twenty-five. So you, yep, it's online. And like I said, these are, we don't, we don't require a lot of these things, but it's stated in there, but this is really all the deadlines that we go through as staff for one case. Back to, so yeah, that's what we're proposing. Back to this timeline, we want you to kind of think about these policy oriented items, or anything really, if we didn't address it, I think we tried to make it. I think we tried to make it, um, kind of succinct, but things that you can think of. And then we will be bringing forward chapters, um, not one by one, I think we can do some of these chapters at of two or three at a time, but then when we get into some of the, some might take two meetings, honestly, one chapter. So maybe we can pick the easy ones first, I don't know. But we'll be bringing forward those, uh, next year. Kind of plan for January through April to have a standing item. And then getting, being, launching some of these other input, um, with stakeholders, uh, developers, et cetera. We'll share that input as we get it. And then hopefully with, this is just a timeline, it's pending, it could change, but hopefully then by spring or late spring, we can get to a, a place where we can start gathering all that input, um, and making edits to that code and getting ready for adoption.
Big job.
It's not a small project.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep, so yeah, and feel free, if you have, think of anything, this is be a long process, so if things come to mind, you can email us or give us a call or, yeah, it helps the staff quite a bit if we get some direction, if we're not, you know, um, on some of the subjects, so.
So, once this is adopted, will these be applicable to all the annexure areas in the comprehensive plan or will it be?
This will be our code, yeah. As far as when we adopt it, how, when the effect of adoption will be or.
After being adopted, will it be pretty much?
The whole city, yeah, this is, this will be the city zoning ordinance, yeah.
And so another thing to think about too, is we're talking about the, the written code, the words, but what the public uses the most, especially our developers or real estate agents, engineering firms, is they look at the map, what does that map look like? And we're gonna make a new map, that's a really powerful thing, right? The zoning map is one of the most powerful things you could ever create. And so that's a big piece that's gonna come out of this. Um, and that, that might, we might consolidate a couple districts, we might make a new district and that will have ripple effects across builders and developers.
It will probably give it, it's a national thing, but, um, yeah, we do have some readability issues with our districts, from like ag to residential.
Can I ask a, just a directional kind of question?
I think they're actively trending though.
We, we had looked at, and you guys have got some areas on the drawing board for annexation as we move forward. So as we look at areas that are not in the city today, but potentially could be, what's the process or approach for how you work on a zoning map for areas to be determined?
We're gonna go to the future land use map first.
Yep.
Future land use maps can tell us what zoning districts we think you ought to pick from, and there's kind of a menu there.
Yep.
And so that's, that works done, um, as part of the comp plan. When they are annexed, they by default come, if they don't have a project, so they're, they're annexed empty ground, they come in as A-one.
Okay.
That's our holding pattern.
It's in our code right now, that's what, there's actually procedures for this.
You enter as A-one, you're, you're born as A-one, okay.
Yeah, and then you upzone based on that future land use map and the use that's being applied for.
Okay, good.
But yeah, that hasn't happened in a long time, so.
But it's gonna happen.
It's fixing to, yeah, yeah. If anybody.